And we are live.
Good morning, everyone, and welcome to the October 21st regular meeting of the East Hampton Town Board. Carol, would you please read the roll call?
Councilwoman Burke Gonzalez.
Present.
Councilwoman Leece.
Present.
Councilwoman Overby.
Here.
Councilwoman Bragman.
Here.
Supervisor Vance Goya.
Present. Please join me in saying the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the public for which it stands.
Today's meeting, we will have nine public hearings, followed by a public portion where any member of the public addresses the board on a specific issue. We ask that you keep your comments to three minutes or less. Jason, can we mute the other background?
Yeah, I think it's Carol's background for a second. Carol? I think I'm hearing the background. I'm hearing background conversations right now.
If you could just mute all but...
I'll do that right now.
I don't know if that's... Okay, that's better.
That was Carol's for a second. So she'll have to unmute before when she reads in.
Great. So I guess at this point, I will ask her to unmute, and we will go to the first public hearing notice, which is a public hearing for 2022 community development block grant funds. Carol, you have to unmute.
I'm muting her right now.
First, I'll read the COVID disclosure for all the hearings. Please note that due to the public health and safety concerns related to COVID-19, the town board is not expected to meet in person at the time of this hearing. Pursuant to New York State Legislature's adoption of an amendment to subpart A and part BB of the laws of 2021, Part E, which authorizes political subdivisions to permit any public body to hold meetings remotely without in public in-person access by conference call or similar service, provided that the public has the ability to view or listen to such proceedings and that such meetings are recorded and later transcribed. This public hearing of the town board can be held via video conferencing with the transcript provided at a later date pursuant to such authority. The public can watch and participate in the public hearing live on local TV channel 22 and live online at the public meetings link on the LTV website. Members of the public can provide comments on the matter being heard by calling the number available on the live stream. Comments may also be submitted and will continue to be accepted in writing by the town clerk or by email to cbrannon@ehamptonny.gov or by mail to the town clerk. 159 Pentagon Road, East Hampton. Comments must be received within one week of the posting of the public hearing transcript. The transcript of the public hearing held by video conferencing will be prepared and filed with the town clerk and placed on the town's website. Please check the meeting agenda posted on the town's website for any changes to instructions to access the public hearing or for information.
Thank you, Carol. Jason, do we have any callers for this public hearing? Again, the 2022...
I haven't read the public hearing yet.
Sorry, Carol.
You gotta let me do my homework, too. Sometime in the year 2022, the town of East Hampton expects to receive approximately $125,000 in federal community development block grant funds. These funds may be used and have been previously used for a variety of projects that benefit low and moderate income persons, aid in the perpetration and elimination of slums of life and/or may need having a particular urgency. Take notice that the town board of the town of East Hampton will hold a public hearing on October 21st, 11:00 a.m., in matters to be determined by the town board or as soon thereafter as this matter may be heard, to consider citizens' views on local housing and community development needs to be met with the $125,000 in federal community development block grant funds expected in the year 2022. These funds may be used and have been previously used for a variety of projects to be selected by local officials. Some of the eligible activities include housing rehabilitation, elimination of physical barriers to the handicap, public facilities improvements, street improvement, public service activities, neighborhood improvement programs. Public service activities are limited to a maximum of 15% of the total grant, which is approximately $18,750. The amount of the final funding is subject to congressional appropriation. Any person wishing to comment on this matter may do so.
Peter, you're muted.
Thanks, Jason. At this point, we can go to callers to see if we have anyone calling in for this hearing.
Understood.
Is Tom Rule in the waiting room?
He is not in the waiting room, so...
I'm just trying to get everything muted on the background for a second there. Okay, we have a few callers in the waiting room right now. I'm just gonna go unmute them and try to mark which public hearing they're calling in for. And I would actually ask callers if there's a certain public hearing that you're calling in for. When it comes in, give a call, and it might be easier for us to sort everything out for you. But I was gonna go through the list. So, unmuted the first caller. Hello, caller, ending in 3672. You're on the air?
Hello, caller? I'm sorry.
Yes.
3672, yes.
Yes. Are you calling in regards to this public hearing?
Yes, I'm calling with respect to the proposal on the intersection of Green Hollow and Buckskill.
Okay, that's not this public hearing, but I'm gonna try to mark you for Green Hollow and Buckskill.
Okay.
Caller will get to you when that hearing comes up. Thank you for calling in.
Moving on to next caller. Okay. Caller...
I'm muted, first caller.
Oh, hi, caller. Could you please mute your TV in the background for a second there?
2672, you're on the air?
All right, I'm just hearing myself right now. Hello, caller, can you unmute?
Are you calling in regards to this public hearing?
Okay, well, that's like time traveling right now. So I'm going to go on to the next caller. Hello, caller, ending 5215. You are on the air. Hello?
Hi, I'm also calling regarding the Green Hollow and Buckskill hearing.
Thank you very much. I will mark that. Okay, and... Hello, caller, ending 6831. You're on the air. Hello?
Hi, yes, this is Dan O'Shea from Maureen's Haven Homeless Outreach.
Okay.
Hello, Dan. Welcome. He's calling for this hearing.
Hooray!
Yes, I am calling for the community development block grant. Can you guys hear me okay?
Yes, we can, Dan.
Okay, great. Thank you. I'll just jump right in. So, you know, thank you for the opportunity for me to present to the East Hampton Town Board in regards to the 2022 Community Development Block Grant. You know, I'd also like to state that the town of East Hampton has been very supportive of us through the community development block grant for a number of years, and that is something that we are truly grateful for, and certainly any support or any funding certainly goes a long way. We are a small agency, so, you know, every little bit of funding we use, we go right back into our guests and our programs. So at this time, I am requesting additional funding support through the 2022 Community Development Block Grant. Maureen's Haven is the only agency on the East End that is solely dedicated to the homeless community, to the homeless population in our community. And with that said, Maureen's Haven does provide critical services such as to the homeless community out on the East End. We operate a day center which operates year-round. Once the wintertime comes out, day center shifts gears to a full seven days a week. Starting November 1st for a full six months, again, seven days a week, we operate an emergency winter shelter program, and that is an overnight program where we provide emergency shelter to upwards of 30, 35 guests. And we do this in partnership with and collaboration with a number of churches, houses of worship throughout the East End, including a very, a number of congregations out in the town of East Hampton. We also provide a broad range of services here at our day center. Our guests do have access to critical necessities such as food, clothing, phones, restrooms, things of that nature. They can get out of the cold in the wintertime, and equally important, getting out of the sun when it's 110 degrees in the summertime. And what's really key is that my day center does provide the homeless population and those struggling with homelessness in general, access to case management, support services, and our social worker, which works tirelessly to get these people the proper care that they need. To date for 2021, we've assisted around, give or take, 12 individuals generating from the town of East Hampton. And one example I like to give is we did work very closely with a family that happened to have had come on very challenging times and had no other option but to be living in a parking lot out in the community. When they had come to us, it was discovered that they were fleeing a domestic violence situation. It happened to be a mother, her mother, the grandmother, and a six-year-old boy. My staff was able to, one, get them out of the situation where they would not be living in a shopping center. We were able to connect them with a domestic violence shelter that was able to accept all three of them, including grandma, which was a very big thing. We helped them buy food. We helped them buy clothes. We actually assisted them with some legal matters. And of course, we've connected them to an additional support services that are more appropriate. They are Hispanic background, so we did work with, very closely with some of the other Latino community organizations to get them situated. And it even went as far as that, once we did get them situated, we were able fortunately to buy some clothes and some toys for the young child. Today, the mom is working, the child is in school full-time, and they are actually trying to move forward with things. In addition, I think what makes Maureen's Haven a very special program is not only the services that we provide to the homeless community, but we really do serve as a true vehicle for community engagement and volunteerism. And using the town of East Hampton for an example, we get a lot of support from a lot of houses of worship, including the Jewish Center of the Hamptons, St. Luke's, East Hampton Methodist, and that goes on. A lot of these volunteers have helped out with our emergency winter shelter program. They have hosted our guests in the wintertime and even helped us year-round with programs such as our weekend summer lunch program, which is a program in response to the lack of food mainly due to the pandemic on the weekends. So we are very, very blessed to have a lot of support from the community members, and it really is a wonderful program. It's not just the congregation. You'll see local civic organizations, perhaps the Boy Scouts, the Girl Scouts, the Honor Societies, and so many people come together to support our mission. I'd like to just briefly mention that funding that has gone recently to Maureen's Haven, that has helped us offset the cost of our social worker, and that is a very key role. She's able to provide counseling, both mental health counseling and addiction services. She works very closely with getting our folks into supportive housing programs. She works very closely with other service providers, whether it be drug and alcohol rehabilitations or hospital treatment programs. It really is a vital role, and it's essential for us to get the services that we need for our guests. And lastly, as I am kind of putting together now my projections for 2022, based on where we are right now with 2021, I do fully anticipate providing services to over 350 individuals in 2022. I've been with the agency over four years now, and I have seen a very steady increase of the homeless in our community, and this is the entire East End. So, you know, we're very concerned that as the pandemic continues and as things like the eviction on moratorium, the moratorium on evictions comes up next year, that we are really gonna get a fair amount of increased activity with our guests. So at this time, I'd like to say thank you once again for the opportunity to give, the opportunity for me to present to the board, and if anybody has any questions or if there's any additional information I could provide, please feel free to reach out to me at any time. Thank you.
Any questions for Dan? Dan, I just want to thank you on behalf of the town board and the community for the work that you're doing within our community to address critical needs. You know, I think you highlighted just one example of how your efforts, you know, have come to support those in need, and we're happy to support you. So thank you.
Oh, thank you very much for the kind words. It really is a wonderful program. As I mentioned earlier, I've been with the agency four years, but we've been around since 2002. And when I first joined the agency, and even to this day, I feel that this is a gift to the community, and it's such a wonderful program. So, so thank you. Thank you again for the kind word.
Thanks, Dan. Jason, can we see if anyone else is calling in for the community development block grant?
Absolutely. I'll unmute the other caller. Hello, caller, ending 4542. You are on the air.
This is Vicki Vancina. I'm calling about the lots on Green Hollow and Buckskill Road.
Thank you. I'll mark that. We had one person who didn't pick up their phone before, so I'm gonna go back to them and just see if there's been a change and see if we can make sure. Hello, caller, ending 8367. You are on the air.
Oh, I'm calling about the lots on Green Hollow as well.
Understood. Thank you very much.
Okay, Jason, have we gone through the callers?
We have gone through the callers. Everybody else is calling for Green Hollow right now. If anyone new hops in, I shall let you know.
Great. I'll entertain a motion to close.
Motion to close.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Passed and carried. We can unmute Carol so that she can read the next hearing notice, please.
Can I make a motion to join public hearings number two and number three?
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Passed and carried.
All right.
Can I unmute Carol?
Yep, I asked to unmute.
Take notice that the town board of the town of East Hampton will hold a public hearing on October 21st at 11:00 a.m. or soon thereafter as this matter may be heard on a proposed local law providing for the adoption of a revised community preservation project plan pursuant to section 64E of the New York Town Law, which provides for preservation of open space, historic places, and recreational areas within the town of East Hampton, including the incorporated villages therein, to include approximately 0.22 acres of land located at 38 Cedar Drive in Springs, reputedly owned by Iris Cook Seymour from Christine Grinnell, and identified on the Suffolk County tax map as 3391523. Take notice that the town board of the town of East Hampton will hold a public hearing in the town board meeting room pursuant to section 247 of the General Municipal Law and section 64E of the Town Law of the State of New York on October 21st at 11:00 a.m. or soon thereafter, as this matter may be heard, to consider the following. The acceptance of a donation of real property for open space purposes, said property being located at 38 Cedar Drive in Springs, reputedly owned by Iris Cook Seymour from Christine Grinnell, and consisting of approximately 0.22 acres of vacant land added costs to the town of East Hampton for reasonable survey title prorated tax and recording charges from community preservation funds, said property being described on the Suffolk County tax map as 3391523, an amendment to the 2021 CPF Management and Stewardship Plan to include said property.
Thank you, Carol. Jason, if you could let Scott Wilson in to give a brief overview?
I will, right now. He is joining.
Hello, board members. So this is actually a neat little quarter acre lot in Springs. You could see it hopefully highlighted on your screen in blue off of Cedar. Just below that is Hog Creek. Oh, wait a second. The parcel actually has restrictions, so it is not a building lot. However, you know, considering the amount of outreach the town has done with the Springs outreach, this is certainly an opportunity to acquire a small piece of green space in an otherwise very dense neighborhood, and it actually meets the requirements that we provided when we did the Springs outreach. And so I would ask the town board to consider accepting this donation.
Thank you very much, Scott. Jason, if we could go to callers now and see if anybody's joined who would like to comment on this public hearing?
We have no new callers for this public hearing. Everyone else is waiting for Green Hollow.
Okay. In that case, I'll entertain a motion to close.
Motion to close.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Passed and carried. Can unmute Carol, and Carol could read the next hearing notice? And I will entertain a motion.
I'm entertaining a motion to join public hearings. Excuse me, one second. Public hearings number four and five.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Passed and carried. Carol, if you'd please read both public hearing notices.
Take notice that the town board of the town of East Hampton will hold a hearing on October 21st or as soon thereafter as this matter may be heard on a proposed local law providing for the adoption of a revised community preservation project plan pursuant to section 64E of the New York Town Law, which provides for preservation of open space, historic places, and recreational areas within the town of East Hampton, including the incorporated villages therein, to include approximately 1.92 acres of land located at 28, 30, and 32 Green Hollow Road, East Hampton, reputedly owned by 28 BF Holdings LLC, 30 Bear Family Holdings LLC, and 32 BF Holdings LLC, and identified on the Suffolk County tax map as 30193311.7, 11.8, and 11.9. Take notice that the town board of the town of East Hampton will hold a public hearing pursuant to section 247 of the General Municipal Law and section 64E 8 of the Town Law of the State of New York on October 21st at 11:00 a.m. or soon thereafter, as this matter may be heard, to consider the following. The town's acquisition for open space purposes with community preservation funds of a vacant property located at 28, 30, and 32 Green Hollow Road, East Hampton, reputedly owned by 28 BF Holdings LLC, 30 Bear Family Holdings LLC, 32 BF Holdings LLC, and consisting of approximately 1.92 acres of land added costs to the town of East Hampton not to exceed $6,845,000 plus associated costs, survey title prorated tax and recording charges, said property being described on the Suffolk County tax map as 30193311.7, 11.8, 11.9. The town's acceptance of monetary donations of $2,645,000 towards the acquisition of these properties, an amendment to the 2021 CPF Management and Stewardship Plan to include said properties.
Thank you, Carol. Scott, if you would give us an introduction?
So the lots we're talking about are actually highlighted in blue on your screen, on the screen share. These wooded lots are actually adjacent to active farmland owned by the town on the corner of Buckskill Road and Green Hollow. When this property was actually in for subdivision in 2005, there were concerns raised by the public, which included impacts to agricultural soils, scenic views, groundwater resources, historic and rural community character, traffic impacts, stormwater, and drainage-related impacts. The request from the community at that time was to preserve this property, which resulted in the town acquiring the majority of the farmland, which included buying down four of the eight proposed lots. That's actually what you see highlighted in yellow, that 6.8 acres right there. So at that time, the owners of the property were not interested in preserving the whole parcel. They wanted to hold the remainder lots that they were gonna create through the subdivision process, the four lots. And since one of the four lots is now developed, we are considering the preservation of the remaining three lots with the assistance and contributions of donors. This time around, we are working with a willing seller, and we have another opportunity to follow through with the community's request to preserve then and now. This creates a scenic nostalgic view shed across the farm, farmland towards these lots. These parcels are within the special groundwater protection area and within the East Hampton Critical Environmental Area. If acquired, these parcels will remain a wildlife reserve area. Is the property expensive? Yes. Is the value substantiated? Yes, by both appraisal and private bidders. Fortunately, due to the generous donations, the cost to the town is greatly reduced. Public-private partnerships have been one of the greatest tools for preservation that has been available to all municipalities across our country for many years. Considering the price of real estate here, I hope this process can be replicated moving forward on this and other lands. Thank you.
Thank you, Scott. Jason, I know we had several people in the queue to speak at this hearing. If you could please go to them in order?
Absolutely. Unmuting first caller. Hello, caller, ending 3672. You are on the air.
Okay, thank you. Thanks for the opportunity to address the board. My name is Ed McDonald. I've lived on Green Hollow Road for the past 23 years. Before that, my family and I lived in the village townhouses in the village and on Miller Lane for five years before that. We've been coming to East Hampton for almost 40 years. During that time, I've seen significant development in the town, but I must say that the development has not been anywhere near as bad as what many predicted back in the 1980s and 1990s. While I haven't seen statistics, it's clear to me, the clear impression that I have, is that East Hampton is faring far better than its neighbor in Southampton in terms of preservation. I think the town government has been handling the issues of development and preservation in a reasonable way. There's no question that preservation is a worthy goal in the community. I mean, people who live in East Hampton, they raise their families here, they retire here, they have vacation homes here, as I do. They're not here because it's a suburb. They will live here in large part because of the town's beauty, the mixture of the town itself, the quaint villages that are adjacent, and the incomparable vistas and landscape that we see every day. All that can be lost in a short time with overdevelopment. If the town is not diligent, excuse me, vigilant, and if citizens are not vigilant, we could lose it. We can't allow death or destruction by a thousand cuts. When the development in the community can be restricted, restricted, and the developers not disadvantaged financially, as has been proposed here, indeed, the developer is accepting what the proposal is, everyone benefits, and the entire community wins. The site of the farmland at Green Hollow and Buckskill is quite beautiful. It's been spoiled to an extent this past year by the construction of a new home, but it makes little sense to continue that defacement. The many people in the community who run, who walk, who cycle, and drive on Green Hollow and Buckskill should be allowed to continue to enjoy the beauty that they have. Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you for taking the time to call in, Ed. Jason, if we could go to the next caller?
Hello, caller, ending 5215. You are on the air. Hello?
Hi, thank you very much for this opportunity. My name is also Ed, unrelated to the last caller. I have been coming out to East Hampton for a little over 30...
Ed, could you just give us your last name, too, for the record, please?
Sure, it's Taffet. Ed Taffet.
Thank you.
And I have been coming out here for about 30 years. I own a place right now. It's about a half a mile from these lots that are in question. And like the last caller, and I wholly echo everything that the first caller said, I've seen a huge amount of development over that period of time. And this particular area where these lots exist, the entire area, the rectangle that's bordered by 27, Green Hollow, Buckskill, Cove Hollow, it's an incredible piece of property, that large area in that particular rectangle. And it's an area that so far has pretty much been developed responsibly. There's many open vistas. The homes that are there fit very well. They're proportioned with the property, and it's a good mix of housing and open spaces. The last caller mentioned, you know, walking, biking, running. I do that every single day. I walk by these particular three lots. I walk by these particular three lots, um, uh, either walking, biking, running, driving by, and it's just an unbelievable treasure in my mind to be able to see this open space every day. And as I indicated, so much of East Hampton really has been overdeveloped, and it would just be a shame, uh, for it to happen here. We have this opportunity to preserve these three lots and to prevent, uh, the further development, uh, and I think it's an opportunity that shouldn't be missed. The adjacent preserve, the farmland that was discussed, and, uh, the tree line, uh, these three lots are, uh, currently filled with trees. It, it makes a lovely sort of block of those homes that are on Horse Meadow, uh, so it preserves the, the feel of the entire community as being rural. Uh, like the last caller, you know, I think we want this place to be maintained as, uh, a feeling of the country, uh, not just to be some suburb on Long Island. And so hopefully we can, uh, we can make that happen. And again, just this open farmland, the vista, everything is just so beautiful as it is, and, uh, we simply don't want the overdevelopment in this particular area. These are relatively small lots, uh, and I don't know the exact size of the homes that can be built, but the one home that is already built is quite large. I'm sure it's, you know, within zoning guidelines, uh, but it's large. These are, everybody throws around the term McMansions, but that's what they are on very small pieces of property, and it's beginning to look like a suburb. So again, I think it's worth saving. Um, you know, thank you very much for the opportunity. I do want to say that I am not one of the people that donated money to, uh, to buy these lots. Uh, I'm not, uh, related to them in any way, uh, but I do fully support, uh, the preservation of these three lots. So thank, thank you very much for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you, Ed. We appreciate you taking the time today. Can we go to the next caller, please?
Absolutely. I'm muting now. Hello? Oh, hello? Uh, caller ending 8367, hello?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yeah, it sounds very windy, yes.
Oh, darn. Okay.
No, you don't, no, no. You sound better now.
Okay, fine.
All right.
Um,
Please say your name, uh,
This is Mary. Yeah, yeah. This is, this is Mary Giaquinto, and like the other callers, I live in the immediate vicinity, and I walk Buckskill, uh, almost on a daily basis. Um, a couple of things. Um, I, I, um, although I support, or let me, let me say it this way, I understand the, uh, the sentiments voiced by the other callers, um, I am, uh, not in favor of using, uh, the CPF monies that way. And, um, the question I guess I'm asking is, um, uh, the folk, what problem are we solving by using, by focusing on these issues? Um, I, 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 I think that the much more difficult, uh, issues of regional collaboration, infrastructure, transportation, and are congested and unsafe roads. By the way, Green Hollow is a truck route, and that's only going to increase. So just let me put that aside for a minute. The issues of are congested, unsafe roads, need immediate and urgent attention and actions. They are problems which government and government alone can solve, and whose improvement would benefit all of us and the entire town. Like the others, I would benefit greatly from seeing the situation, the, the landscape, the vistas remain the same. However, we face huge issues that I, I beg the town board to focus on those. And I do that because it would benefit all of us and not the two handfuls of people that both called in here and would benefit this transaction. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for taking the time to call us today, Mary. Can we go to the next caller, please, Jason?
Absolutely. And let's give me a second, making sure I got the right order. Okay. Hello caller, uh, ending in 4542, you are on the air. Hello?
Uh, hello?
Hi.
This is, uh, good morning. My name is Vicki Machina, and I am the owner of this former Abe Katz home located at 141 Buckskill Road. I'd like to thank the board members for their interest in purchasing the three remaining Green Hollow lots, and the opportunity to provide some brief history and context for this purchase. Abe Katz, who may be known to many of you, was a local dairy farmer and prominent member of the East Hampton community. He purchased the McAlpin Farm in 1932 from George McAlpin's family after his death. He renamed the farm to be the Dune Alpin Farm and created a successful dairy farm on 150 acres. The majority of this property was sold in 1972 and is now known as Dune Alpin, an open space plan in development, which incorporates open space carefully designed to help preserve the historic character of the farmland. Abe Katz retained approximately 15 acres for his own home at the southwest corner of Buckskill and Green Hollow Road. When he died in 1978, he left his house on 5.6 acres to his sister Ruth Bush, and the nine-acre open parcel to his other sister Beth Levine. We bought our home on the 5.6 acres from Ruth in 1988, and later subdivided the property into three parcels. While we have expanded the house over the years, the original barn structure used for the main house still survives. It is a special property with importance and unique historical significance to the community. The nine vacant acres adjacent to our land previously owned by Beth Levine was eventually sold, and the town of East Hampton had the wonderful foresight to buy the open field of approximately seven acres to preserve it as natural open space and farmland. However, the two acres of woods along the southern edge of the property was subdivided to create four buildable lots ranging in size from 0.6 to 0.8 acres in the woods. Unfortunately, to create viable building lots, the trees on these lots must be removed, and the approvals for these lots allow for them to be cleared when developed. As you are all aware, the largest of these lots, um, at the, at the, uh, corner of Green Hollow, was recently sold, and the trees have all been removed to enable the construction of an enormous home, which is currently being built without any consideration to the unique environment, wildlife, and natural habitat of the area. As you also know, the three remaining parcels adjoining the open seven-acre preserve at the Buckskill Green Hollow corner that the town bought years ago and is now being actively farmed. These three parcels are fully wooded and contain many beautiful mature and young trees that are home for a wide range of wildlife, including many birds. It would be very unfortunate to allow virtually all of these trees on these beautifully wooded building sites to be cleared in order to build substantial houses that are disproportionate in size to the properties and disruptive to the natural environment. With all of the recent and current developments that is ongoing throughout East Hampton, open farmland, natural vistas, and wooded areas for wildlife are becoming quite rare, especially in this particular area. Preserving these parcels and the unique nature of the Dune Alpin Farm area is so important to maintaining the natural open space and habitats that are sadly being eliminated. Losing these woods would be devastating to our community. My family and I have enjoyed and appreciated the opportunity to live in this area for over 32 years, and it is truly our family home that will pass on to our, to, uh, young adult children. In addition to the natural beauty of the land, we have also always valued and respected its rich and important history. As a longtime East Hampton resident and former New York City Landmarks Preservation Commissioner, I thank you for the important work that each of you do, and appreciate the enormity of the responsibility you have, which requires the ability to balance many considerations in your deliberations. While I understand that there are always competing priorities, I believe that the purchase of these lots adjacent to the existing seven-acre preserve will have a meaningful, important, and lasting impact on the community, and will enable the preservation of the special and unique character of the area that we all cherish. Thank you for this opportunity to speak today.
Thank you for taking the time, Vicki, to make us know, uh, your comments. Be well. Can we go to the next caller?
Absolutely.
Thank you, Jason.
Okay. One second. One moment, let me see if I can get this up, and... Hello caller, ending 4221, you are on the air.
Thank you. Good morning, Board. It's Jane Mearing and Emma Gansett. And as a preamble to my comments, because I don't want to at all sound disrespectful to the people who have argued in favor of this, I just want to be clear, I'm very enthusiastic and supportive of CPF preservation activities, and I know what a difference even one preserved property can make, um, in a community. But today I come before you to offer some comments and raise some specific concerns as part of this public hearing regarding this proposed acquisition. If some of what I say here sounds a bit familiar, it's because I was before you just four weeks ago regarding the proposed out-of-plan acquisition at 21 Much More Lane, which to me raised similar concerns, particularly around the lack of transparency, the size of the price tag, and I will say the questionable rationale relative to the CPF mandate and priorities. As we know, the price tag on this property is, the pros stated as 6.845 million, funded 61% by public taxpayer CPF funds, and the remainder coming 39% being sourced from an unidentified quote "number of" community members wishing to ensure the preservation of these three parcels. I did go to the, the site myself, um, because I want to be educated, and I, I came away actually a bit, um, confounded, and here are my concerns. First of all, this is yet another quote "out-of-plan" transaction, um, something that was not included in a two-year well-reasoned, um, plan and list of 700-plus parcels, nor was anything else even close in this area, um, on that target list. It feels like we're seeing too many of these sort of off-label transactions. In fact, I see on the agenda today, you'll have more of these proposed, um, and I am concerned that in general, this can start to undermine public confidence in the plan, especially when the impetus and rationale around them are, um, somewhat obscured. Um, on issue two, um, here again, just like we saw on Much More, we confront an unacceptable lack of transparency, but now even more so. Uh, we don't know who are parties to the LLCs. We have no disclosure about who instigated this deal. We have no disclosure as to who are the specific individuals who are contributing the money. And there is not clarity about what appraisal methods have been used to set and vet the price tag. I understand LLCs are used a lot privately. I don't think they're okay for CPF purchases. The public shouldn't have to be left guessing or made to scrounge and sleuth around to understand identities and interests, um, and people shouldn't have to FOIA to, um, understand, FOIL to understand an issue coming to a public hearing. I don't know what could possibly be the justification of this level of ongoing obfuscation. With regard to the price tag, um, I don't have time today to go into all the comparables, but this is well in excess of what we've seen on prior, um, or more recent CPF acquisitions. Even in this frothy real estate market, what equates to 3.62 million per acre doesn't seem, uh, credible relative, um, to that. In addition, just 17 months ago, 26 Green Hollow, which was slightly larger, was, was purchased for 1.3 million, and so on an equivalent basis, this would be an appreciation of 2.3 times, um, relative to that. Point four, the statute specifically specifies that a property added to a plan has to contain a, um, must contain a rationale. In this particular resolution, and it was restated today, I think by Scott, quote, "This wooded property is adjacent to active farmland. This creates a scenic and nostalgic view shed across the farmland." That is just not true in that this beautiful vista is already very accessible to the public via Buckskill Road and Green Hollow. Preserving that portion of it could be done by, um, ensuring that there's a woodland buffer if these properties were to be, um, were to be, uh, developed. Also, um, Peter, at the October 12th public portion, you said that this piece of property retains one of the few remaining agricultural vistas in town. While I would always love more, um, there are many beautiful ag vistas that thousands of people can enjoy daily, driving and walking around the, the town. Point five, this transaction creates little to no incremental benefit or value to the community or the public or our conservation imperative. It creates value primarily and only for the private interests of the neighbors and for the seller and the broker. Less than three-quarters of a mile away is the access to the immense, I think it's like 300 acres, um, Buckskill Preserve, um, that have beautiful woods and trails that anyone can access. In addition to the farmland, there's also gorgeous vistas and preserve space to the south of, um, of Horse Meadow on that field that runs down to 20, to 27. And my last point, I don't think this rises to the lauded private-public partnership. Um, and I know, um, this has been, you know, used as, as a rationale here. The definition of a public-private partnership is that the risks are borne and the values to be returned are proportioned commensurate with the investment. Here we have a 60-40 public-private funding split, but I'm going to say a near 1 to 99%, um, percent ratio of public to private benefit or, or value. In addition, the CPF does indeed discuss private conservation for the CPF, um, plan, but they're very specific about defining what private means specifically. It's, it's not-for-profit land conservation organizations like the Pecanic Land Trust and the Nature Conservancy. Overall, classifying the unnamed neighbors as donors or contributors is misleading. They're buying something that benefits their quality of life and their value of their property, and indeed, they are not necessarily contributing to us, but here it looks like the town is contributing to private, small number of investors. Um, I imagine they could just purchase this land directly on their own if they wanted to preserve it.
Thank you for sharing your opinions, Jane. Have a great day. Can we go to the next caller, please, Jason?
Yes, I will. All right. And one second, let me just... Okay. Hello caller, ending 8764, you are on the air.
Good morning. It's David Buddha. First, I want to give a shout out to Jane. I'm, I'm glad that there is at least one other person with, uh, the time and energy and experience to delve into these issues and is make meaningful commentary on them. I hope to get together one day, Jay. Today's public hearings concern the proposed town acquisition of 1.92 acres of vacant land, constituting three buildable lots created by the 2005 Buckskill Farm LLC Open Space Subdivision. The proposed purchase price is $6,845,000, or more than $3.5 million per acre. The enabling state statutes that created the Community Preservation Fund, or CPF, established several very basic legal, ethical, and environmental norms that should control and guide the town's implementation of the CPF program. It was created a little more than 20 years ago and has proven to be a godsend to allow the town to wisely preserve community character by acquiring environmentally sensitive lands, creating passive and active public parks, and preserving historical sites. The CPF is a self-imposed 2% tax on the purchase price of most real estate transactions that must be used solely for the good of the public as a whole, and not to further any private interests. The CPF funds may be only used to acquire property interests after they have been thoroughly studied and carefully selected, using objective criteria to be included in what is called the CPF project plan, which at present is a list, Jane tells me, of about 700 properties deemed worthy to be considered for town acquisition with CPF monies. The purchase price paid by the town must be objectively reasonable, as limited by a professionally-prepared appraisal. The lands to be acquired must be open and available to the public at large. CPF acquisitions must provide real, tangible, public benefits. And lastly, the final decision- And lastly, the final decision-making process must be open to public scrutiny and meaningful public input by means of the requirement to hold a public hearing. Unfortunately, this proposed blockbuster land purchase deal, now being considered, fails to satisfy any of the basic legal, ethical, and environmental norms that I've just mentioned. It has been a rush job, shrouded in secrecy, lacking transparency, and built upon a bed of erroneous factual statements. Moreover, it is being facilitated and fueled by a misguided notion of a true private-public partnership acting together solely for the good of the general public. First, the proposed purchase of the three, of the four remaining building lots that were created by the Buckskill Farm subdivision was apparently never seriously considered for inclusion in the CPF project plan at any time in the more than 15 years since they were created, not even as late as last month, when the town board finally, after 10 years, adopted a new comprehensive update to the 2011 CPF project plan, after what I understand was a two-year labor of love from the planning department. One of those reasons for non-inclusion on the CPF project plan list is that the four clustered building lots were carefully created in an open space subdivision that preserved the bulk of the land in an agricultural reserve that was sold to the town by the developers for 1.9 million dollars, and is now an active organic farm surrounded by a deep green belt on both Green Belt, Green Hollow Road, and Buckskill Road, and is, and also a tall eight-foot agricultural fence. How much land preservation can and should one subdivision provide, I wonder? Of the 9.57 acres in the subdivision, 6.8 acres were already preserved from development. The resolution scheduling the public hearing to add these properties to the CPF project plan cites the need to protect a quote scenic and nostalgic view shed across the farmland, and to preserve a quote pocket wildlife reserve area. This is mostly pretextural posturing and nonsensical. If a member of the public traveling on Buckskill Road tries to look south across the farmland today, they will only see a wide green belt in front of the surrounding eight-foot agricultural fence. When substantial homes are built at adjacent to active farmland, such as the subdivision south of the unfenced farm fields along the Montauk Highway in Sagaponik, the homeowners invariably erect their own tall green wall of live plantings so as not to be inconvenienced by the noise, dust, and smell of the adjacent farming activity. If this, if these three small lots are allowed to be developed, and each is about three quarters of an acre, in all likelihood, within a year or two, those new homes will be invisible to anyone who goes out of their way to peek through the green belt, through the fence, and to look for the nostalgic view shed across the existing organic farmland. Moreover, the supervisor and probably some other town board members were woefully misinformed about whether these four subdivision lots, building lots, are subject to the town's clearing restrictions that were enacted in 2004. He stated on October 12th, "There's a stretch of woods that would be completely cleared. There are no clearing restrictions on those specific lots, and they have been grandfathered through that subdivision." Nothing could be further from the truth. The final subdivision approval adopted by the planning board on October 10, 2005, and Sylvia will remember that, she was the vice chair, plainly states that while the agricultural land reserve obviously would have no clearing restriction, the four approved vacant parcels, approved for building, must meet the newly enacted clearing restrictions. That's from the resolution. Of course, the town needs to enforce those resolutions. Based on the size of those lots, there is an enforceable requirement not to clear about 35% of each of the three subject lots. If the town building ordinance enforcement department diligently does their job, both building and ordinance enforcement, that existing stretch of woods at the rear of the farmland cannot be quote-unquote completely cleared, as Peter proclaimed just the other day. The supervisor on October 19th also mistakenly stated that the adjacent building lot at 26 Green Hollow Road has quote been completely denuded, suggesting that the same would be allowed to occur if the other three lots were developed. The property survey submitted to obtain a building permit clearly states the applicable clearing restriction that more than 40% of that lot may not be cleared, which includes the existing scenic easement along Green Hollow Road. But it's up to the town to enforce the provisions of the subdivision approval and town ordinances. Also, the four building lots, according to subdivision approval, must only take access to their buildings by means of a 25-foot-wide access easement that was to be created from Green Hollow Road at the southern edge of the subdivision. They may not access nearby Horse Meadow Lane. A survey for 26 Green Hollow Road mistakenly shows that there is access to Green, to Horse Meadow Lane, and someone needs to correct that. They may not cut down the existing thick vegetation in the road verge area north of Horse Meadow Lane. Do the neighbors on Horse Meadow Lane know that? Probably not. They are probably scared that they will look out their front doors and see their new neighbors. Heaven forbid. But that's not going to happen. It can't happen if the town does its job enforcing the subdivision approval.
David, I'm going to ask you to kind of wrap up the comments.
Okay, this is a double public hearing, Peter. This is a significant matter. I have a lot more to say. I hope you'll indulge me.
I'd like to hear more.
The town board, as usual, turning to public notice and disclosure. The town board, as usual, fails, fails to make available to the public in advance of a public hearing all relevant documents. They can and should do better. I was finally able to persuade the board to establish on the town website a place where all relevant documents that will be presented and discussed at work session meetings can now be viewed by the public. Thank you, Kathy. No such website exists to make available to interested members of the public documents relevant to public hearings. On the other hand, ZBA posts on its town webpage all documents relevant to its public hearings for the benefit of the public and all interested parties, as well as the applicants. One of the critical documents I was able to ferret out only through use of the Freedom of Information Act and the Open Public Meetings Law, and by pressuring them publicly, these matters publicly, is that I have obtained a copy of the evaluation form report prepared by a member of the town planning department dated September 15th of this year. The planner reviewed about 40 different criteria and makes a conclusory judgment as to whether the subject property is a poor, weak, average, strong, or excellent candidate for CPF acquisition. You can view that as A, B, C, D, or F. Here, the conclusion was that this is merely average, call it a C, not strong or excellent. 6.845 million for a run-of-the-mill average property value to the CPF fund is really hard to take. I could read the long list of objective criteria that are not satisfied or applicable to the subject property, but that would take up too much time, and of course, I don't want to overrun my time. Suffice it to say that since the CPF cannot possibly purchase every vacant property in the town, expenditure of CPF funds should be focused only on purchasing those that are objectively judged to be strong or excellent candidates. As for the considering, as for the considering the quality rating that was made by the CPF Advisory Board, that's a group of knowledgeable citizens that is required to be appointed by the town board to review CPF matters and make recommendations of the town board, I have been advised that no one can know what they concluded, since apparently no minutes or other written record is ever made to the CPF advisory, by the CPF Advisory Board. How they conveyed and what recommendation they conveyed to the town board is, must remain a mystery. This is quite surprising. Turning to the question of pricing, the pricing of this proposed acquisition is remarkable. The one building lot that was sold, was sold for 1.3 million in the middle of last year at the height of the pandemic buying panic. That suggests that a fair price for the three unsold building lots is in the $4 million ballpark. This conclusion is also supported by the fact that the town is looking to expend a net amount of 4.2 million dollars of CPF funds. One can infer that the town's appraisal came in at or about that number. From public real estate websites, one can learn that the three remaining lots have been listed for sale for more than five months at an asking price of $2 million for one lot. The proposed purchase price is even substantially more than three times that asking price, another anomaly. Now, Jane mentioned, so I won't go into in-depth, but the sellers here are three LLCs. They are the successors to the original Buckskill Farm LLC. That was a partnership, Marvin Hyman, the now-deceased attorney, who's the husband of longtime town justice, and his partner, who I believe is more of a developer, investor. And he's clearly still involved, but who else is currently a member of the three LLCs that will benefit by reaping substantially more than the appraised value of their land? Don't know. Town hasn't told me. Now, what the town did tell me, and this is actually very important, is that the town entered into and solicited, or perhaps the realtor involved solicited, pledge agreements from eight immediately adjacent neighbors. This is not the general public getting, standing up and saying, "We want to preserve these lots for the public good. We want to preserve these lots because it's going to create a public park. We want to create these lots because, preserve these lots because we're going to have town public access." None of that's true. What I was able to find out was that seven of the eight donors of this over $2.5 million, by the way, to be paid over three years, which means the town is going to make a tax-free, interest-free loan to the donors, so-called donors, that eight of the, excuse me, seven of the eight were, are not anonymous at this point. They did not request anonymity. I guess they have nothing to fear from the IRS. And they are all the immediate neighbors to the east, the Matshunas, the five property owners to the south on Horse Meadow Lane, the one new homeowner at 26 Green Hollow Road who just is building his house, and one little straggler across the road on the other side of Green Hollow Road, but who faces the farm. That is not public interest. That is not public purpose. You have prepared, and frankly, I'm going to say this, and I know I may regret it, but I think the town could be accused properly of aiding and abetting tax evasion. The IRS rules require that there be a public purpose, that there be no private gain, that there be no goods or services received in exchange for the donation in order for it to be fully tax deductible. Well, there's no goods, there's no services here. No one's getting a free lunch for their donation, but what they are getting is enhancement to the value of their properties. That is not a true measure of satisfying the IRS public purpose requirement for a contribution to a municipality. Since time is fleeting, I'm going to end here. I really think that the town has better things to do with its limited CPF money. I know that your coughers are swelling, but that's no reason to get crazy, no reason to become spendthrift. There are many more things that the town can do by way of preserving environmentally sensitive lands, beaches, open spaces, parks, areas, the large tracts of area where the town can enjoy, as they have many of the other CPF projects, where the town can actively use those lands, like the one across the street on the north side of Buckskill Road, which I am, which I've already walked around, and I am arguing should be used for a, a small dog park as well. This is not a good value for your money, not good bang for your buck. If you are so concerned about preserving what's left, ensuring the retention of vistas and not denuding and despoiling the environment, the town needs to do a better job. Just look down the road at 11 Green Hollow Road, a massive piece of property, a full-page ad in today's store. The property, look at the property as it looked six months ago and as it looks now, totally denuded. Yes, there's a ordinance violation pending because someone close to me alerted them to that fact, but the town is sleeping when it comes to preserving trees. Why are these trees so special that you would spend so much of the town money and solicit what is clearly a bogus contribution from the immediate neighbors in order to enrich beyond appraisal value the owners, the true owners of the subject property? Thank you very much for your time. I'll try not to be so long-winded next time.
Thank you, David. I'd like to go to see if we have any other callers for this public hearing now, Jason?
Yes, we do. I have, I have one new caller who joined in. I'm muting now. Hello caller ending seven four six two, you are on the air.
Hi, thank you very much. Good morning, East Hampton Town Board and all of the participating members here at the meeting. My name is Andy Uter, and my family and I are full-time East Hampton residents since 2016, but we've been coming out here for over 10 years. So East Hampton is a very, very special place to us. I want to applaud the board on all of its preservation efforts, especially the upcoming habitat preservation at Green Hollow on Buckskill Road, in which my family and I support 100%. As many of you know, this property is adjacent to the beautiful seven-acre farm preserve that the town had the wonderful foresight to conserve years ago. The best view of this agricultural vista is going down Buckskill Road or the end of Green Hollow Road, both of which are busy, busy roads, so, so many people get to appreciate the exquisite view shed for the classic East Hampton. When so many of us think of East Hampton, we think of this exact spot, a beautiful scenic farmland vista surrounded by a gorgeous tree line fringe. It's these couple of acres of wooded tree line fringe up against the farmland that you're saving. Thank God for that. This is the historic nostalgia of East Hampton we should all be trying to preserve, and is so important to the East Hampton community at large. So bravo to the town board for saving our East Hampton treasures like this. There just aren't many left. It's my understanding this tree line and wooded vista fringe by this farmland represents three lots that, if not preserved, would have been completely cleared to build three oversized McMansions. Thus, the precious tree line would be gone forever. We already saw the owners of one of those lots nearby recently clear all of the trees, all of the trees, to build quite the large house. That tree line lost forever. Very sad, indeed. We walk our rescue dog by these Buckskill and Green Hollow lots you're preserving, so we've gotten a pretty close look at this habitat we're talking about. This wooded area is real habitat heeming with wildlife. In doing some research, we found there's always a very high concentration of animal life in a wooded area on the fringe of farmland. For example, there's a huge amount of bird species here, like blue jays and robins and all sorts of sparrows and hawks and woodpeckers and catbirds, and at night, you can even hear the owls. We've walked the dog there and seen rabbits and turtles and families of turkeys, and we've even seen fox on more than one occasion. This is a spot so many animals call home. So to lose this habitat would have been tragic for the animal life, not to mention the view shed we all so treasure. It's an amazing thing that the community in the area got together and was able to raise as much funds as it did and team up with the town preservation office to make this conservation happen. With prices of East Hampton land going higher and higher by the day, we should be hopeful to see more partnerships of the various East Hampton communities and the town doing land preservation just like this. I'm probably exceeding my time limit, but in closing, I want to reiterate, my family and I have been coming to East Hampton for over 10 years. We've seen the landscape change from more and more development. Although the town preservation office has done an incredible job preserving what it can, so many of the open vistas have been disappearing, so we have to save the East Hampton nostalgia that we have left. All I can say is congratulations to the town and the community for saving one of East Hampton's remaining habitats and agricultural vista view sheds that we all so treasure. Thank you very much.
Before the caller goes, are you, do you have an address? Are you a neighbor of this property? You say you're walking your dog near there?
Yeah, I live, I do, I do live nearby. I do live nearby. I understand that one of the large donations came from, you know, some philanthropic entity not even having, they don't have a presence in East Hampton, but they believe in preservation and, and conservation and habitat, and they donated a significant amount of money to this. So, so it's nice to see. It just wasn't from the immediate community. It's gotten a far, a little bit more of a far reach.
Can you just tell us? I don't want to ask your address. Can you tell us what street you live on?
Thank you very much.
Thank you for sharing your comments. Jason, do we have any other callers on the line?
We have one new, we have one new caller. They just came on. Hello caller ending nine five one two, you're on the air. Hello?
Hello, excuse me, but I actually want to discuss another subject, so it's, wouldn't be appropriate. I wasn't sure of the protocol.
Can you tell us what, what you're calling in for? Is it another public hearing or public comment? And we'll make sure we get back to you at that time. And we'll make sure we get back to you at that time.
I don't know what the difference is. I have something important I want to say to the board. I wrote you all a letter that I emailed.
Okay, so it's not regarded as a public hearing?
I beg your pardon?
It would be a general comment, not?
Well, it involves.
Yes, it's a general comment here.
Controversial contamination of water.
Okay, so in that case, we'll get back to you.
Lose my home.
We'll get back to you during the public comment section and proceed with the public hearings. Thank you for sticking the line. Thank you.
Should I stay on the line?
Yes, absolutely, and we'll get back to you.
Oh, I'm sorry. I misunderstood. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, aside from that, all other callers have spoken so far.
Hey, in that case, I will entertain a motion to close.
Motion to close?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, passed and carried. Carol, if we can unmute Carol and go to the next hearing notice, please.
May I just quickly ask if callers have already spoken and they don't want to speak on any of the other public comments? You know what I mean? If they decide to hang up and then, you know, it's, it's hard for me to keep track if people are still on the line. That's all.
Well, we'll go back to anyone who's still on the line when.
Solid, thank you.
Thank you, Jason.
Notice is hereby given to the Town Board of the Town of, the Town Board of the Town of East Hampton will hold a public hearing on October 21st at 11:00 AM or soon thereafter. As this matter may be heard, to consider comments of all persons regarding a local law amending Chapter 102 Building Construction, Article 3 Solar Installations to provide for revisions of Sections 102-30 Fast Track Permits and Section 102-32 Safety Information Required, Paragraph B, an abstract which follows. Chapter 102 Building Construction, Article 3 Solar Installations, Section 102-30 Fast Track Permits is amended in its entirety to label the existing introductory text as Paragraph A and to relabel the sub-paragraphs A through L as 1 through 12 as follows. 102-30 is reconstructed set forth above to provide for new numbering and lettering without change of text except as follows. In Subparagraph F, now Subparagraph 6, change LIPA to PSEG. 102-30 Paragraph B provides for the issuance of certificates of compliance in lieu of a certificate of occupancy for solar installations. Section 102-32 Safety Information Required, Paragraph B, is amended to require AC disconnect switches to be located on the outside of the structure except when the solar panels are equipped with microinverters or similar device that inverts DC current to AC current attached to the panels or at the panels.
Thank you, Carol. Do we have in the waiting room, I believe, Courtney, Rocky and Samantha or Lauren Steinberg to introduce us?
All right, they are joining right now.
Thank you.
Hi, good morning, Lauren, or probably I should say good afternoon at this point.
Yeah, good afternoon.
If you could give us a brief overview on this legislation?
Sure. So, the, the driving change of this legislation was something that was brought to our attention about the town's, the town code's current, or existing, I should say, requirement for an external AC disconnect for solar panels. It was brought to our attention that with the advancements in solar panel technology, many panels now have the inverter directly on the panel. So at the panel location, the current is converted from AC to AC, and so AC current is running into the home, so it's no longer necessary to have that external disconnect if you have the microinverter on the panel. And, you know, in our ongoing efforts to reduce solar soft costs and make it easier for people to install solar panels and, you know, do the right thing in that respect, we thought that this would be something that would make it easier for people. We spoke with our bar marshals, who, in speaking with their contacts, also confirmed that our code was pretty out of date compared to the technology advancements. So that is why we added that component. And then we had been working with John for quite a while on incorporating the, the component of that code for the certificate of compliance versus the certificate of occupancy.
Great. Thank you very much. Jason, if we could go to the callers and see if anyone has called in for this public hearing?
Absolutely. I'll unmute right now. Hello, caller ending 7462. You're on the air. Hello, caller ending 7462. You're on the air. Okay, they're not picking up. And let me just go back to this other caller and hello caller and see if it's working. Aside from that, I don't have any other callers over here. I'm going to just make sure, we had a brief internet outage. I'm hearing everything on my phone line, but I'm going to restart the phone line to make absolutely sure that everything is set.
Thank you, Jason. I didn't notice any interruption on our side in terms of broadcast at all.
Goodbye.
I had one, everyone, where everyone froze, and I just want to make absolutely sure that everything is still in working order.
You sure we weren't just being exceptionally still?
I, I would, I would be so impressed at that point.
You are the only participant in the conference.
Okay, just give me a second before this music kicks in. Okay, as far as I can, right now, there are no attendees. No one is calling in. We have no callers on the line. Thank you all very, very much for your patience.
Thank you. At this point, I'll entertain a motion to close on this public hearing.
Motion to close?
Sorry. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Passed and carried. Carol, if you would read the next public hearing notice, hearing notice number seven.
Notice is hereby given to the Town Board of the Town of East Hampton will hold a public hearing on October 21st at 11:00 AM or soon thereafter. As this matter may be heard, to consider comments of all persons regarding a local law amending Chapter 102 Building Construction, Article 1 Building Construction, Section 102-1 Purpose and Intent, and Section 102-24 East Hampton Town Energy Savings Program, an abstract which follows. Section 102-1 Purpose and Intent is amended to add reference to the inclusion of the New York State Stretch Energy Code 2020 Supplement of the Energy Conservation Construction Code of New York State 2020, exclusive of the provisions of Section R 403-6-2 of such code. Section 102-24 East Hampton Town Energy Savings Program is amended to add reference to the inclusion of the New York Stretch Energy Code 2020 Supplement to the Energy Conservation Construction Code of New York State 2020, to provide for new hers rating requirements and set forth the methodology for calculating gross floor area for determining gross floor area for compliance, and to set forth insulation requirements for commercial structures. Section R 403.6.2 will be deemed severed from the New York State Energy Code 2020 Supplement and will not be applicable at this time.
Thank you, Carol. Jason, if we could go to callers, see if we have anybody calling in for this public hearing?
There are currently no callers for this hearing.
Motion to close?
Yeah, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Passed and carried. Thank you very much. Carol, if you'd go on to hearing number eight, please.
Notice is hereby given to the Town Board of the Town of East Hampton will hold a hearing on October 21st at 11:00 AM or soon thereafter. As this matter may be heard, to consider comments of all persons regarding an amendment to Chapter 255 Zoning, Section 255 1172 Height, to add a new exception to the height limitation set forth in the dimensional tables at 255 1110 for solar installations, an abstract which follows. An exception to the height limitation set forth in the dimensional tables of 255 1110 to allow solar installations on flat roofs to extend up to 10 inches beyond the roof's surface, even if such height exceeds the height limitation set forth in the dimensional tables at 255 1110, provided that the limitations set forth in the pyramid law 255 1172D are not violated. Any person wishing to comment on this matter may do so.
Thank you, Carol. Lauren, do you want to give us a brief interview, rather overview of this?
Yeah, so this is, I think, pretty straightforward. You know, this would allow solar installations on flat roofs to exceed the height restrictions in the code by 10 inches, which is a, an inappropriate amount per, you know, the solar, the feedback we receive from the solar developers that we've been talking to. You know, this would avoid individuals who may have homes that are at that maximum height in the town code having to go through the variance process if they want to put solar panels on their homes.
Thank you. Jason, do we have any callers on the line for this public hearing?
There are no callers on the line.
Thank you very much. I'll entertain a motion to close.
Motion to close.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, passed and carried. Carol, if you'd read our last public hearing notice for today?
Notice that the Town Board of the Town of East Hampton will hold a public hearing on October 21st at 11:00 AM or soon thereafter. As this matter may be heard, to consider the reposting of speed limit signs at Three Mile Harbor-Hard Creek Highway for its length with Copises Lane to Kings Point Road to reduce the speed limit from 35 miles an hour to 30 miles per hour pursuant to Section 240-52 of the town code.
Thank you, Carol. Jason, do we have any callers on the line at this point for this hearing?
We have no callers on the line.
I'll entertain a motion to close.
Motion to close. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, passed and carried. And that brings us up to public portion. I believe we had at least one caller for public portion.
She is no longer on the line right now. If she wishes to call back, I have the lines open.
Okay.
But other than that, there are no callers.
I'll wait just a moment in case somebody else wants to call in for public comment, and then we'll move on to resolutions.
We now have one new caller, and I will unmute right now. Hello, caller ending 9015. You are on the air. Hello?
Wayne Scott. This will only take.
Could you repeat, could you repeat? You were muted for a second. If you could repeat?
My name is, you're going to ruin my joke. My name is Michael Hanson, and I live in Wayne Scott. And my comment is, I have safe drinking water coming into my house because of the leadership of Peter Van Scoyak. Peter worked with Suffolk County Water Authority to prioritize the installation of water mains throughout our hamlet. Installing eight and a half miles of water mains took only four months. That seems like a record to me. It was a relief to me and my wife and three kids, well, not, not the baby, to turn off my well and turn on Suffolk County Water. So, thank you, Peter Van Scoyak.
Well, thank you, Michael, and I think that's when we first met, when you reached out about getting water, safe drinking water to your house, and we provided that for you. So, thank you for calling.
I do remember. Bye-bye.
Thank, thank you. Thanks for calling in. Do we have any other callers on the line?
I just want to add that as liaison to Wayne Scott, I appreciate the work that we got from, the help that we got from all levels of local government as Peter and I worked together to get that done.
Yeah, okay. That's an interesting take on things. If we could go to the next public comment caller?
Okay, and unmuting now. Hello, caller ending 9512. You're on the air.
Hello, thank you for putting me through. I, I, my name is Donna Haji Popoff. I'm a former 20-year resident of Montauk up to three years ago, when I lost my home to foreclosure and subsequently entered a grueling cancer treatment on my throat. To this end, I would appreciate your patience with me. As one of the side effects of the radiation while battling stage four cancer is that it's very difficult for me to speak, and I do hope you'll be able to understand my words. I can assure you, I won't be as long-winded as I used to be, and I can do this in just a couple of minutes. Although, I do want to preface by saying, I greatly enjoyed the public relation announcement by the fellow who spoke on behalf of Mr. Van Scoyak for cleaning his water up. I'm very happy to hear that. So, because that's in part the reason for my call. Ironically, the last time before I spoke before the board, it was on the very subject of a highly contaminated Suffolk County water well behind my home that was not being addressed. I met many times with Natural Resources, Kim Shaw, and various members of the government, but to no avail. I'd like to point out that my NYU oncologist believes my cancer is a direct result of exposure to the highly carcinogenic chemical, Dioxane-4, which is a byproduct of the automotive and aerospace industry.
Your oncologist has stated that he thinks that your health issues are directly related to Dioxane 1.4?
Yes, thank you. And which, which had probably been dumped about 25 years ago. You know, it's used in the automotive and aerospace industry. And ironic, not ironically, but my next-door neighbor has the same cancer, and there are many people in Montauk. I know six personally, and this is a rare cancer, impacting only 2% to 3% of the population. Now, it was, I'm not going to go into the histrionics because I wrote a highly detailed two-page letter to the board. I had hoped to send it to you in advance, but my mind was clear this morning, and I got it, at least to you. But, I, just one moment. I'm sorry, I need a little water.
Take, take your time, Donna.
Thanks. Now, there are other controversial and very disturbing issues surrounding the environment of my once-beloved home. You know, it includes businesses, commercial businesses that were operating without the appropriate zoning, businesses like a garbage company, an excavation company, which began over the course of time with the heavy traffic, the very loud noise, the smells of diesel and garbage, the dirt from this dirt road and from the excavation company. The value of my property began to go down. This was a beautiful little dirt road. There was only one house on our side of the street, surrounded by woods. And my husband, a much-loved member of the community who has died in my arms in that house, bought it and selling a great Carl Fisher house because he house, bought it and selling a great Carl Fisher house because he loved the woods and was in them every day. He was a real Montauker, hunting, fishing. So, the value of the property began to diminish. My husband died. I tried various things to survive and get the bank to modify my mortgage, sending photos of all these garbage trucks and so on. And it was horrifying. I got drone footage, photographs. In addition to which, going back to 2003, in fact, I sent you an article that Rusty Drum wrote, he wrote a few, on another contamination, which was, you know, this little dirty secret that all of the electrical power from Montauk and some of Amagansett runs down that little dirt road known as North Shore Road. It's two blocks from Navy Beach where I used to be every day. And they, these, the electrical power and the cables were not buried at a legal depth. So, what would happen? In fact, the same contractor did the power line, did the, ran the lines along Montauk Highway, and it had to be ripped up, removed from the center of the road and put to the side because, again, it wasn't buried deep enough. But what would happen on my road was these very, very heavy, heavy trucks filled with heavy materials coupled with water. Large potholes would appear. I've sent you pretty compelling photographs. But with these potholes, you know, which caused two of my car engines to seize. But these red banners began to appear. This is going back to 2003. We moved into our home in 97. And I forget when they began to appear. The press article I got finally was 2003. And these warning signs indicated these power lines, these electrical lines were only six inches away, which meant somebody walking into a puddle that become electrocuted. I did my darndest. I formed a road association, met with many supervisors. It's a little dirty secret. And I have dirt, shall we say, on several people. No need to go into that. It's not how I operate. So, from the beginning, the conditions on this road were pretty horrible, horrifying. But to add insult to injury, to injury, a good friend of my husband's was a leading, was a leading real estate broker. You all know her. She sold tremendous amount of property, you know, all very high-end houses. And she said, honey, I'll sell your property. And she said, it should be 1.9, you know, it's two acres. But because of this dirt road, we'll put it at 1.4. And she will- Sorry. I'm sorry.
Take your time, Donna.
So, she did her due diligence, being the responsible broker she is. And I have the tax map sheet created, all your documents. And it turned out is very heavy businesses, garbage company, excavation. While they're commercial, they were not zoned. But the businesses, they were carrying on. It was all illegal. And she's told me, she informed me, sweetheart, I will lose my license or get fined $20,000, $30,000 if knowing about this and selling it. There will be lawsuits later on down the line. I can't sell it. I'm sorry, darling. So, I tried to get the town to buy it. I tried to get through to Scott Wilson. He didn't answer half a dozen calls. I traded with Sylvia Hope for me to speak to him on my behalf, which she did. Because I thought, this is perfect property. Speaking of land preservation, behind me, the woods are owned by both Suffolk County and the town. You all need space for your materials, for your trucks, whatever. But he wasn't interested. You know, I'm not going to go into all the permutations of what I went through. And finally, you know, when I approached Peter, when, knowing, I was about, you know, I tried to get the bank, by the way, as I mentioned earlier, to modify my mortgage. And the way you do that, you go into foreclosure, you don't pay your mortgage. They put you into foreclosure. And I was negotiating with them for several years. Oh, but I'm sorry, I need water. The radiation destroyed my salivary glands. I also didn't eat food for two years. I didn't take them so recently. And it's dangerous for me to swallow, by the way. I can die, but I had to get rid of that, too. So, I discussed this with, they were about to foreclose, and I was in court, which fortunately, my attorney got more time for me. But I, I went to, I saw Mr. Van Scoyak outside the building, the town hall building. And he said, well, the solution is to change the zoning of your property to commercial. And frankly speaking, as I wrote in the letter, I started to tear up. I'm not a crier, but I teared up because, as I informed him, I had tried, I'd gone to three attorneys. Every one of them, including Andy Hammer, who used to work for the town government, every one of them told me I didn't have enough money, and they didn't have the time in the land of no. And Peter Van Scoyak told me, and I quote, "Not to worry. Get the papers from the zoning department. Bring them to me. It's the board that makes the changes." News to me with all the people I know who were in negotiations for God knows how long and spending a fortune to get their property rezoned. So, I have to tell you, as a woman who has fought against injustice my entire life, I was appalled. And, you know, what I want to say here is, you know, my husband used to tell me, sweetheart, we have each other, just don't let all this bother you. You know, I know about corruption in Washington. I know about corruption in the communist country Bulgaria my husband escaped from. In fact, I created a business with him to help him when the Soviet Union collapsed. He hadn't been able to go back home for 30 years, or he would have been killed. I know all about it. But I was shocked to find this little naive girl who was about to turn 70, from New York City, the Big Apple, running very big businesses, including the roadhouse in Central Park. How corrupt. Excuse me. I don't know several of you. I know good things about Mr. Bragman. I researched you before I left. I liked you and I voted for you. I don't believe in voting for party, particularly in local politics. I believe we need to vote for the right person. And all I can tell you is, I lost everything, everything.
Donna, I'm really sorry about your troubles. I know a number of us have tried to help over the years. We did look at the potential of purchasing the property, and unfortunately, it didn't work out in terms of price and criteria, given where your property was cited. You know, I did speak to you here at Town Hall, as you, as you say. The board does have the power to rezone a property, a use on a property. That is the board's, you know, authority. The process, however, is, is, as you said, somewhat complicated and complex. It takes the review of the planning board to make a recommendation to the Town Board as to a rezoning of a property. And I just want to say that I'm very sorry for the number of troubles and difficulties that you've had over the years, and I wish you the very best in, in your health. And I hope that the treatments are successful and that you have a full recovery. And I do appreciate you taking the time today, especially given your condition, to make your comments non-toss.
Thank you. Was that Mr. Van Scoyak speaking?
Yes, it was, Donna. It's Peter.
Then thank you very, I greatly appreciate that. And I want to say that I appreciate what you just said. But it, it doesn't address the very real issue that these men had businesses that are still thriving without the right zoning. And that is frankly my salient point in why I hold you all and not you personally, the government, why I hold you accountable. I want the public to know about the water so that somebody will do something and maybe fix the road with your electric issue. But at the end of the day, I lost my home because of illegal businesses. And so, when I am out to East Hampton in a few weeks, I'm coming to release my husband's remains where he wanted in the ocean. I hope that's legal. And, you know, if anybody wants to discuss this with me, I'll be open to having any sort of discussion. I'm a reasonable person.
Well, certainly.
And I thank you for the opportunity to be able to finally speak my truth because I have kept this in and had this battle for so many years. And I want you to know that I waited until the anger was gone. This is now, just, these are the facts, man. You know, I couldn't bring that, add that to my health dynamic. I don't hold anybody responsible personally, and I show no anger toward anyone. And I hope you all have a beautiful day and continue to do the good work you do because you do a lot of great work. I love you, East Hampton, and I miss it terribly.
Thank you, Donna. And when you're out, and when you do come out, I'd be happy to meet with you and talk about your concerns further.
Thank you. I really appreciate it.
Wish you all the best.
Thank you.
And we miss your husband as well. Yeah, thank you.
I know. What a great guy.
Absolutely.
I see him every day.
I'm sure.
Bye-bye.
You take care.
Thanks. Appreciate it. Thanks.
Do we have any other callers on the line, Jason?
We currently have no other callers on the line.
Okay. At this point, I think we can go on to resolutions. Kathy, you have resolutions to offer?
Starting with Resolution 2021 1179, it's the approval of the warrant. Claims total $623,932.39. And the utility warrant totals $49,477.65.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, passed and carried.
Resolution 2021 1180 is a notice of public hearing for the 2022 preliminary budget. That hearing is scheduled for Thursday, November 4th at 2:00 p.m. And pursuant to section 108 of the Town Law of the State of New York, the following are the proposed yearly salaries of town officials. For the town supervisor is $118,075. For the four town council persons, the salaries each are $73,798. There are two town justices. Their salaries are each $85,752. The town clerk is $99,534. Town superintendent of highways, $99,534. The chairperson of the Board of Assessors is $94,712. There are two town assessors. Their salaries are each $85,524. The clerk for the town trustees is $24,138. There are two assistant clerks for the town trustees, and they are each $20,093. And there are six town trustees, and their salaries each are $8,553.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, passed and carried.
2021 1181 is a payout upon resignation for Jennifer Willingham for a gross total of $3,669.63.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, passed and carried.
I'd like to offer Resolution 2021 1182. This is the Capazola Schedule of Public Hearing for CPF Acquisition Amendment to 2021 Management and Stewardship Plan. The purported owner is Margaret Capazola, 76 Fairview Avenue, Montauk, Suffolk County Tax Map 300-19-8-4.2. Proposed purchase price is $440,000. And this will be heard on November 4th, 2021 at 2:00 p.m.
Have second?
Second.
All in favor?
Sorry.
Aye, passed and carried.
I'd like to offer Resolution 2021. I do have to make one amendment to this. 2021 1183, this is for Schulman Schedule of Public Hearing for the CPF Project Plan Edition. Carol, in the second paragraph, it has the date on there, it's Thursday, May 6, 2021, 2:00 p.m. That needs to be changed to Thursday, November 4th, 2021 at 2:00 p.m. The Town Board would like to amend the plan as most recently adopted on September 2nd, 2021, to add approximately .2 acres of developed land owned by Amy Breslin at 8 Much More Lane East Hampton. The property is located on the west side of Harrock Park on Much More Lane, based on its location and ideal opportunity for a buffer or expansion of the village parkland. First criteria of the CPF law is A, establish parks, nation preserves, or recreational areas. And therefore, this parcel meets the criteria set forth in Town Law 64E4 that establishes and helps define what the preservation of community character involves. This public hearing will be held on November 4th, 2021 at 2:00 p.m.
Second.
All in favor?
Second is amended.
Uh, second is amended?
Yes, thank you.
If we could turn back time. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, passed and carried.
I'd like to offer Resolution 2021 1184. This is for the Schulman for Schedule of Public Hearing for the Acquisition Amendment to 2021 Management and Stewardship Plan. Proposed owner is Amy Schulman Breslin, AKA Amy Schulman. Location is 8 Much More Lane, East Hampton, East Hampton, sorry, East Hampton Village, Tax Map 301-4-5-3. And the purchase price is $2,557,500. And the public hearing will be held on Thursday, November 4th, 2021 at 2:00 p.m.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, passed and carried.
1185 is the termination of various seasonal employees from 2021.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, passed and carried.
1186 is the Havens Beach and IA Design Budget Adjustment, where the town threw the Clean Water East Hampton Initiative seeks to upgrade the municipal sanitary systems to advanced treatment with nitrogen-reducing capacities. We actually went out for this engineering work, part of our, part of the supervisor's initiative, for the Havens Beach Comfort Station for $16,800, a proposal dated December 10th, 2020, where the design permitting budget is exhausted due to various requests for modifications from the Village of Sag Harbor Committee and other governing entities. We are proposing to increase this budget amount $6,300.
And other governing entities, we are proposing to increase this budget amount six thousand three hundred dollars. Based on a proposal from L.K. McLean dated October 5th, 2021, to modify the existing budget for this comfort station and design.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, passed and carried.
1187 is the sept donation of services for frag muds removal. Where the Natural Resources Department has obtained. The New York State Department, D E C Conservation Permit to remove invasive vegetation. Along the shorelines of Pussies Pond and Akabonic Harbor. Apart, as part of an effort to restore natural habitat. It has asserted, asserted that Cornell Cooperative Extension is interested in donating their service to remove. An area of the invasive species using mechanical means. And therefore, the town is going to allow this under the direction and oversight of the town of East Hampton staff. At no cost to the town. Thank you.
The second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, passed and carried.
2021 1188 is a notice of bidders for EH21-042 for the Lars Simonsen Skate Park renovations improvements. The bid is available October 21st, 2021, the bid is due back November 18th, 2021. You can contact our Town Hall Purchasing Department. Between hours of 9:00 AM and 4:00 PM at 631-324-4141. There will also be a pre-bid meeting to be held on site located in Montauk Skate Park, 110 Essex Street, Montauk. At 11:00 AM on Thursday, November 4th, 2021.
Second, and I want to thank David for spearheading, spearheading this operation. It's really nice to see so many Montauk. Residents donating for this cause.
Agreed. Thank you.
Absolutely, thanks David. We have a second?
Second.
And all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, aye, passed and carried.
1189 is acceptance of donation for the Lars Simonsen Skate Park. This money is to be held in maintenance, fund for the continued maintenance, upkeep, and potential future expansion of the Lars Simonsen Skate Park. The amount is one hundred and ninety-three thousand dollars from John D. Britton.
Second, thank you.
Yes, incredible, thank you very much. All in favor?
Aye.
And carried.
Resolution 2021 1190 is a budget modification for parks and beaches. Were taken from budget line. One thousand five hundred dollars from part-time salaries and full-time salaries in the amount of thirty-four thousand dollars. Transferred to budget line subcontractor costs in the amount of five hundred dollars. Fuel motor vehicles in the amount of one thousand dollars. And repair general in the amount of thirty-four thousand dollars.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, passed and carried.
Resolution 2021 1191 is to accept undertaking and security for urban renewal parcel 69A in Springs. Dash four dash one. Its applicant is Bobcat Management LLC, and the check is from Chase Bank at twenty-two thousand five hundred dollars.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, yes, carried.
Resolution 2021 1192 is to amend a ground lease at 26 Blue Jay Way. It's improved land included in the town's affordable housing program. The lease agreement was amended by addendum dated June 4th, 2020, naming James R. Carter as an additional lesssee. And we wish to amend the existing lease and another addendum by removing Emily Gomez from the lease agreement. Leaving James R. Carter as the sole lesssee of the subject premises. And, and this is the second. Lease agreement. On this property.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, aye, passed and carried.
2021 1193 is authorization for the town of East Hampton to submit an application. To the New York State Department of Environmental Conservation for Municipal Waste Reduction and Recycling Outreach and Education. The funding source requires a match of 50% of eligible costs, and the source of which may be from surplus funds. And this would be for municipal recycling coordination, education, planning, and promotion projects with an overall goal. To assist municipalities in expanding local waste reduction and recycling programs and to increase. Participation in those programs.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye, passed and carried.
Resolution 2021 1194 is a payout for retirement for Susan Buckley. In the gross total amount of. Let's see. Oh, there was a deduction, there was a deduction of eighteen cents, I have to notice that. The gross total is one thousand seven hundred ninety-four dollars and fifty cents.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
I'm glad we're counting pennies.
2021 1195 is a payout for healthcare waiver for Michael DeLalio. Under collective bargaining agreement and the policy with the town of East Hampton, offered to pay out incentive for eligible employees. Who waive healthcare enrollment. Which Michael did, and he will get a check for the appropriate payroll account for a gross total of one thousand seven hundred. And thirty dollars and seventy-seven cents.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Resolution 2021 1196 is a modification in sanitation. So increased budget line unappropriated reserve surplus in the amount of four thousand. I'm sorry, we're taking from budget line. The unap, unap, unreserved surplus in the amount of four hundred and thirty thousand. Putting it in the budget line for subcontractor costs in the same amount, four hundred and thirty thousand.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye, passed and carried.
Resolution 2021 1197 is to authorize a guarantee. By the town of East Hampton for the payment of principal and interest on. indebtedness of the Housing Authority, and what this involves is a refunding. Of refunded. Bonds. The, the Housing Authority borrowed money and the town guaranteed. The loan to purchase the Si Schutz apartments. On Springs Fireplace Road, and the bond is called, has been refunded over the years in order to reduce. The interest rate.
It was, uh, it was on 27 AM Gansett, Jeff, not Springs Fireplace.
Yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry.
This is for the Gansett Meadow property.
Gansett Meadow on.
That's not what the first paragraph says.
That's, yeah.
This is, this says Springs Fireplace Road.
Yeah, that's what, that's what the resolution reads. This is from the Housing Authority.
Carol, you're muted, but I, John. I, I don't.
The resolution came from Bond Council.
Yeah, that doesn't sound right, though. I don't believe it is correct.
Did we read it prior to offering?
Well, this, do we want to pause and do the rest of the resolutions and have John check while we?
Are we time sensitive on this, Jeff?
Yep.
I, I'd have to check, I mean, I've, I've spoken to, I actually spoke to John and Becky Hanson today about this. So I'd have to get back to you on that.
Uh, yeah, I, again, I think that amount was the guaranteed loan. That we made when Gansett, oh, four acres was. Was purchased, and this would conclude that, I believe, but. Let's put that aside while John follows up, and I think it's.
I'll go to hold the bond council, find out.
Yeah, correcting that initial language, because I don't.
I don't, I don't think Springs Fireplace Road is correct, and there's.
Thanks, I don't think there's any.
We haven't done any guarantees for Springs Fireplace.
Right.
Uh, we don't, we don't have, we don't have Housing Authority property that we've been involved with.
Yeah.
Just, uh, I would answer.
So, um. Alright, well, sorry you don't have the info on that, Jeff, but we'll go to Bond Council and see if we can get it corrected. In the meantime, I believe that leads to my resolutions. 1198 is notice of pro, uh, public hearing Promised Land Fire Protection District for 2022. And that is resolved that the Promised Land District would pay the sum of five hundred and sixty thousand twenty-eight dollars and ninety-two, ninety-eight cents. For 2022 payable honor before March 1st, 2022. And. Let's see, the public hearing is scheduled for.
November 4th at 2:00 PM.
Yeah, November 4th.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, passed and carried. 1199 is to appoint Jess Frost to be 2021 Town Property Management Committee.
Uh, second, welcome aboard.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye, passed and carried, it's great to have you back, Jess. Resolution 1200 is an engineering budget modification for 2021, and that is to move from full-time salaries. In the amount of two hundred and fifty dollars to engineering in the same amount.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye, passed and carried. Uh, David, I don't know if you wanted to read this one, but it's, it's somehow attributed to you and the sponsor, but. It's authorized, it's 1201, it's authorized agreement Highway Department Communications. And that is resolved that the town would, uh. Goose Town Communications would provide, under a proposed agreement to the town, rentals communications equipment. For a total cost of four thousand four hundred and twenty-two dollars per month for a two-year term. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye, passed and carried. 1202 is accepted proposal, RFP EH2021 107. Merchant card, internet, and/or electric payment processing services, Point and Pay LLC, All Page Incorporated. And that would be. Uh, let's see. Turn the page here, authorize and direct the town supervisor to sign that agreement.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, passed and carried. 2021 1203 is to increase the cap, Dan Rezo. Whitman, Osmond, Hannah, LLP is outside Environmental Council for SECRE 2021. And that would be resolved that. The increase in funding will be capped at additional fifteen thousand for constituting a total of thirty-five thousand dollars for the calendar year of 2021.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye, passed and carried. Resolution 1204 is to accept bid EH21038. T-shirts, sweatshirts, and other uniform items, all store, all-star custom apparel design. And. That resolves senior purchasing agents hereby authorized to purchase orders in accordance with town bid specs.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Passed and carried. 1205 is to accept bid number EH21035, Akabonic Solar Farm Pollinator Meadow Rebid. Nelson Pope and Voorhees LLC, resolve the bid Nelson Pope and Voorhees LLC is hereby accepted for total cost of forty thousand three hundred dollars. Includes first year monitoring maintenance to be taken from fund line. In the Natural Resources Department, and four thou, forty thousand one hundred and fifty dollars. And one hundred and fifty dollars as well for the Solar Farm Pollinator Meadow Rebid.
A second, I'm anxious to see that get started.
Yeah, and I'm happy that also we rebid it because. I think the time when we put it out, so, so many companies were probably too busy. And I, I'm, a little bit of a delay on this one actually ended up being of. We actually attracted someone for it, and hopefully now we can attract bees.
Well said.
We're trying to be good stewards to the environment. 1206, budget modification, finance, human resources department. This is moving. Nine hundred dollars. From part-time salaries. And. Two hundred dollars from health insurance buyback. Four hundred and fifty dollars from office equipment. To advertising in a total amount of one thousand five hundred and fifty dollars.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, passed and carried. 1207 is stipulation of settlement, Spiritso, and Grey Lady. Whereas the town of East Hampton filed a lawsuit, Supreme Court. Of the state of New York. Against Spirit, uh, Spiritso LLC, Grey Lady East LLC, and using. And others using and occupying 440 West Lake Drive in the unincorporated Hamlet, Montauk, town of East Hampton. And the town and all the defendants have reached a resolution of the controversy, and the terms of such agreement are enumerated in the stipulation of settlement. Therefore, be it resolved that town of East Hampton supervisors hereby authorized to execute said agreement.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye, passed and carried. Are there any additional resolutions to offer?
No.
Just noting on the, on the bonding resolution, I didn't, I didn't reach Bell, but I, I talked to Becky, and this is the old. How development that the town, I believe the town originally constructed this, and then we had transferred to the Housing Authority.
So this goes back to the Akabonic Apartments?
No, the Springs Fireplace.
The middle income next to the senior son.
Right, Jeff, you want to offer that again?
Yes, I can offer it again, and I just wanted to say for the record that I checked in with both Becky and the Chair, the Housing Authority, because it caught my eye as well. And what it is, is along the way, it started out, the bonding started out in 2008. And it, they, the Housing Authority has periodically refunded, refunded, not given back, but. Funded again the bonds in order to keep current with interest rates, and it affords them. Reduced payment costs over the life of the bonds. So now, the East Hampton Housing Authority wants to. Refund. The refunded bonds. Only lawyers could come up with that kind of language. And what it means is they substitute the refunded bonds for bonds that have already been refunded. And in order to do it and get the most advantageous. Interest rate. They ask the town to guarantee the refunding of the bonds. And they promised the town that they'll get at least a 3% reduction. In the amortization costs of the bonds, so it's gone from 4.3 million dollars. And it's now outstanding at 3.675 million dollars. And the, the refunding will reduce the amount of money that the Housing Authority will have to pay. And, and the resolution authorizes the town via the supervisor. To execute a guarantee for the Housing Authority, and that guarantee. Puts the full faith and credit. Of the town behind the borrowing, which means if there were a default. We are saying that we put our full faith and financial credit to repaying it, so this resolution authorizes. Execution of the guarantee. That permits the Housing Authority to get this lower rate, and it protects us too, because it reduces our potential liability.
Yeah, I think that would have been helpful, I think, for the board to have you. Go over that and your liaison reports preceding this meeting, but in any case, thanks for that explanation, certainly understand.
Well, I knew there.
I'm sorry, can I, can I just finish? I cer, I certainly understand the refund bonding. Uh, because that was also done by the town on numerous funds as well. So thank you for that, Jeff, do we have a second?
I'd give you a plain.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, passed and carried. That concludes our resolutions. We do have an exec session, I believe.
We do, we have an exec session, and I make a motion to go into exec for CPF and advice of council.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, aye, passed and carried. Can we do that at 1:45? Does that work for board members? That gives us a chance to get a bite to eat?
Sure.
Yes, thank you.
I'll send the link out shortly. Stay safe and be well, everyone. Enjoy this beautiful fall weather.
Yeah, it's gorgeous out there.
Thank you, Jason and LTV, appreciate it.